In May 7, 2018, work session at the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Mr. Privet, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
Here?
Here.
Here. Items for a city council meeting of May 10, 2018, first item on the agenda, council preview, Mr. Filing, anything you'd like to share?
Sure thing. First, May is Bike Month, and so council will be receiving a proclamation from BikeWalk Williamsburg that we didn't from BikeWalk Williamsburg, from the current capital to the colonial capital to celebrate May's Bike Month. And then there's two public hearings lined up. The first is a request for special use permit to operate Magic Touch Auto detailing at 1455 and 1457 Richmond Road. The second is the real estate rate increase public hearing regarding the budget. The next item on the agenda is the budget adoption, leading off with an opportunity for ordinance 1801 to repeal the FY 2018 tax increases for tourism, and then the consideration of the adoption of budget for fiscal year 2019 that commences July 1st, 2018. The only two items in the reports, one item under city manager for a Williamsburg redevelopment Housing Authority city update to the agreement to the memorandum of understanding, and under city attorney reports, the resolution to appoint the Board of Supervision.
Questions, Mr. Filing?
We're not obligated to pass the budget in May, we could have every hearing that I had to do that in fact, you know, statutory.
Yes.
No other questions?
This takes us to the public comment section of the meeting. If anybody would like to address council on any items that would be addressed in our Thursday meeting, please come forward. It's Ian Owen. We'll move on to background presentations and discussion. The first is the National Citizen Survey overview. Mr. Privet?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Counsel. Today, I just wanted to go through a fairly quick presentation on the National Citizen Survey. As we're about to kick it off again, and the final process that we both need to set in the GIO, the survey is intended to assist with these seven targets. These are probably taken from the National Research Center's website. There are a couple more that they have listed, but these are the ones that we use it for. So everything's on evidence-based decision-making, innovation strategies, communications, engagement, primarily for performance measurement and benchmarking. I want to talk just a minute about the Williamsburg way and how this all kind of relates together, because I think this is part of the picture that often is missed and sometimes is forgotten. The dashboards are our first layer, followed by the National Citizen Survey, and then the goals, initiatives, objectives, the budget, and then the core vision is in the center. All of that comes together to influence how we reach the vision that council has adopted for the city. So the dashboards are the first step, and of course, everybody here on the council knows the dashboards are headed down the city's website. And they're intended to mark kind of those daily performance tasks of the departments toward the goals that are set at the beginning of the process. And those goals are often determined by the results of the National Citizen Survey. So all of this kind of interrelates. So next, we have the National Citizen Survey, which determines where our community's residents feel statistically speaking, that the city's operations and services are falling as we are benchmark against other look at these cost points. So the same tool is used, the sampling is the same, and the results can be compared easily. There's one question that is customizable. There's actually several others can be customized to question. The City of Williamsburg really only uses it for one, and it goes without a doubt. Then we have the binding of GIO process, and this is the point at which you strategically set the two-years' goals in the binding, and that is intended to be the targets that cities best strive for to complete during that two-year period. And of course, that hopefully is based on the National Citizen Survey results and how we perform on the dashboards up to down. And then finally, we have the budget. And the budget is where all of that becomes operationalized into how we reach the overall goal of the city, which is of course the vision. And that ultimately relates to the core service values the city devised. Are we able to say that the vision, the vision statement that has been crafted by the city council is accurate and true based on the results of the National Citizen Survey and the services that we are providing? So now that that, the fun group piece is done, the basic services of the National Citizen Survey is what we have used for quite some time. The cost of that is $14,985. This year, they've increased the number of participants that actually were surveyed to 1,600. I think in the past, it's been 1,200 different households that received the survey. So the 1,600 participants will actually receive a mail, several different mailed pieces of information about the survey. It actually started today, so people will likely start seeing this in their mailbox beginning next week, late this week. And the first piece is a postcard, and they've been selected to provide the report in the survey, and then it'll be followed up by a letter from the city manager, and then of course, that's followed up by the actual survey itself. And so lots of opportunity to get those 1,600 folks to actually take part in the survey. Here's what the Citizen Survey actually looks like when you receive it. It's a series of questions. It's not incredibly long, but all of them are structured very similar to this. All of those questions are the same, of course, in the tool that's used nationwide. The only question that is different is this one, and it's unique to the city of Williamsburg, and it does relate to the vision. Now, I want to talk to you just briefly about how this question has changed in previous years. In previous years, this question has been a single-answer question about whether or not you thought the city was meeting the vision in a couple of different areas. At the suggestion of the National Research Center that performs the Citizen Survey, we have split that out now to get a more accurate reading about how the citizens feel about each one of the topics that's covered in the GIO. Because obviously, you might think that the city on the whole is operating well in full partnership with those groups, but when we split it out into who those groups are, you know how to differentiate them. And so we'll get better, more detailed data this year than we have gotten in the past on the vision of the city. So it'll be interesting to see how that gets worked out. The 2018 timeline, here it is, and of course, the object here is to try and get this completed before we begin the GIO process, so that you have that data, as you can see there, we'll complete it early August and be presenting to you before that. So we should have an ample time to influence your GIO process. As I said, we're a little ahead of schedule because the postcards actually went out. This is the 2008 survey results, and the only reason I put this up here is because this will be the 10th year since that first enrollment in the Citizen Survey. That's not to say that Williamsburg hasn't been doing surveys of citizen opinions for some time. Even before 2008, there was a concerted effort to survey the citizens and determine how they thought we were doing, but it was more of an internal effort as opposed to this nationwide benchmarking study that you. So it'll be interesting. I'm not going to go over these results every day, but I think it will be important, although Mr. Collins, to compare the 2008 results to what we get back this year, being that we've had 10 years now of survey and hopefully working toward a vision. So it'll be kind of a good time to check in and see if we're making progress. Yeah, and that's my question.
Any questions?
No questions? Thank you. Well, I do have an question. What is the percentage of people who actually fill out the survey and send it back?
In the past, it's generally been around 20%.
20%?
A little low, a little high, it's been going to be.
Is that in line with other cities, or is there any way to track that?
I don't know that for certain, because Collins thinks it's a little higher than the national average, and it gives significant information.
And it does very often have a presentation related to that. I think it's also some form of unwrenchment about that too.
I feel like it's important to see how it's a place to park. Mr. Privet, mine is, listen, I know we're not, you know, it's a random selection of states. Where are those named and managed addresses, Congress? They come from the left side. What happens is at the beginning of the timeline, the National Research Center has been working with me and had the IS expert on, have the city's boundaries changed significantly so that there's other areas that need to be taken into consideration? We supply all that data, and then from that, they include with the US Postal Service the addresses that should receive the mail. So those dots actually represent the households that receive the mail. And so with roughly 20% responded, do we have the ability to know how many we actually received? Yes. The process includes, the purpose of the postcards and the other mailings that are sent out before the actual survey is to give the postal service time to return the postcards to the city. We have to count of those and the addresses that were returned so that we can inform this National Research Center that those were the ones. And so yes, we do know who actually received the survey, and then the survey itself is who actually contributes to this, that's how it works.
Would there be an effort to, let's say, of the 1,600, 300 come back, valid addresses that they did, would we, is there an effort to find 300 others, or do we just?
I don't think that there's an effort to find 300 others. I think they ask the city to try and collect the address if possible, and then they proceed to. Thank you very much for your presentation, Drew. I think this is a first step to establish, and that's by all the goals, initiatives, and outcomes process, and this is important enough to spend the first things that you read in a GIO package, so it's a good thing. And I just have one question to follow up with that, following Mr. Collins' question. So in terms of with the survey, do you also, what's the addresses, the CSU, addresses for students on campus, because they get a mailbox, example, or would some of the students that would be able to participate with this mainly come from off of this? If the addresses, if those addresses, and I don't know. It's like a P.O. box. If those addresses are receiving mail from the US Postal Service, and they have the opportunity to be included in that. Gotcha. And then if the students, if this is happening, then the seller, it's simply before they to whatever addresses, yes, you got. Whatever process is identified at the postal service, if the student has informed the college, or the student has informed the US Postal Service that they want them forwarded to a different address, then it would be forwarded. Ads and that, I don't know. Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Privet. Looking at the unique question in 14, the city's vision statement, we've never asked the question this way before.
Right.
So we don't have anything to benchmark the vision?
That's correct.
And if we, for whatever reason, at the next PIO conversation, decide to change the mission statement, which could happen, because it hit a good, this one of the PIO two years, then we don't really have anything to compare it to.
So.
So in the long term, I'm just curious how that helps us understand if we're doing the better job.
So my answer to that would be, and Mr. Filing may have a bit of that, and he and I discussed this, and we ultimately decided not to split it out, and then when I sent that information to the National Research Center, they responded without even knowing me to talk about it, and said, "We really think you should split this stuff tonight. You could get more meaningful results." And so in our discussion, what we decided was, if, the original question was, "How's the city doing meeting the vision?", and it broke it out into the sections of the vision statement. So Williamsburg will become an ever more safe, beautiful, livable city with historic and admirable academia for nine. That was the first one. And so the question below that would have been, strongly agree, somewhat agree, with that whole segment. And then the next one was, served by a city government, cohesive, red, always improving and innovating, is the next question. Same category, strongly agree, somewhat agree. And then the last piece was, in full partnership with the people who live, work, and visit here. So we were asking the same question, we just weren't dividing it out by each piece. So the way that we've done it is so that people can tell us, do they think we're really working in full partnership with the people who work here, and then, do you think that we're really working in full partnership with the people who visit here? And hopefully, what that will tell us is, the areas more specifically of division that we need to focus on, as opposed to being so different.
I don't know if we have the results out, but let's say this came back, and so the city is, and I'm taking, when we say the people who live in the city, who work in the city, and who visit the city, those are exclusive categories. So if you live and work in the city, the primary category is live in the city. And if you work in the city, it's people who don't live in the city. Let's say the results came back, and I don't think the city wants all the people who work in the city, but it's filled out by people who live in the city who don't, they don't do that.
That's true.
So, I don't know, it just seems like nobody's still willing to work in the city.
Well, if the council feels like you'd better go back to the old way, the surveys are not the most.
Oh, no, I'm just curious with that, how it is. But with it, what is the end outcome we hope to be able to get from this when it comes to how we're going to address policy in order to achieve what the citizens are telling us in the survey? Because these are all very general topics. I don't see anything in this question that would help me understand when it comes to GIO time, what should we do if we get a low score in one of those categories? What do we do when our goals initiative's an outcome to help raise that response in the future?
And I think that's an excellent point. That point is exactly why I brought this up with Mr. Collins, because I said, looking at another part of the, "Served by a city government, cohesive, red." If I were a citizen, I don't know what that means. As an employee, I'm not even sure that I know what it means. Does that mean that the council is cohesive? Does that mean that the management of the city is cohesive? I just, I think everybody's going to define that differently. Obviously financially strong, I think there's probably uniform definitions for that. It may be that this process tells us, as we perform the next survey, that we're going to change this question from being so specific to the vision to being more general as to the responses that we're handling, so that we can better define the topic. Not that we want to change the vision, but we may want to change the question to get it.
Last question. If Ms. Williamsy owns a home for residents, and Mr. Foster wants that residence, who could screen?
It's an excellent question. So the Citizen Survey actually just, right as the meeting was starting, sent me an email with FAQ, the questions that citizens might ask, and I want to know. And the answer is that, in that situation, if the land is owned by someone that doesn't live in the city, they want the resident at that address to box it.
And I would guess that my rental house occupied by tenants, they would get the survey and give it to us in the mailbox for the next three weeks or so. I'll leave that between new tenants. I don't think that many will own that. I might take it out more.
Is there the car, I think I've done this in the past, is there an option for somebody that could write in extra stuff, or general thoughts, or is it all a survey, or things like this?
Yes, it's all a survey, just like this. There's no opportunity for comment. Doesn't mean that you can't send a city account out to another county.
I realize that that would be challenging, that you have to put them through a survey and figure all of that into that file.
Thank you. Next is the farmer's market update, Tracy Hearn, Market Minute. Back to you, Ms. Hearn.
Do you keep the head, perhaps her board member, Vicki, a staff member to give her some of the information?
That side side looks up if you need to put your stuff.
On the side, your left side. Thank you, Mayor Filing, and members of the city council. On behalf of the staff, board, vendors, volunteers, and customers of the Williamsburg Farmers' Market, I wish to thank the city of Williamsburg for its support. Market began as an idea of two Williamsburg business owners, Tom Prior and Tom Austin. They envisioned an open-air, European-style market in Merchant Square, similar to those they'd visited in D.C. In early 2001, there were only around 1,800 markets in the country. Collaboration between the city of Williamsburg, Colonial Williamsburg, Merchant Square Association, the Williamsburg Land Conservancy, and William &amp; Mary made the Williamsburg Farmers' Market a possibility. In 2001, consultants from DePonte Circle Farmers' Market in D.C. came to meet with the steering committee, and the first season began July 6, 2002, with 16 vendors. That season was just 20 weeks long. In 2005, the market became a not-for-profit 501(c)(6). The mission of the market is to sustain, foster, and operate a weekly farmers' market in Merchant Square for growers and producers to sell fresh seasonal food and farm products direct to the consumers in the Williamsburg area. In order to obtain that mission, we do that through the following objectives. The first being to provide healthy, regionally-produced food to all economic levels of the Williamsburg In 2013, the market began a token program as a way to accept SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits. From the start, the market matched that benefit amount dollar for dollar, so however much was spent using SNAP benefits was doubled in order to increase affordability and access to that fresh local food. And this was really intended just to make it more affordable and equitable to all of the Williamsburg community. Currently, the SNAP matching does not have a limit. Thanks to funding from our community and the Food insecurity nutrition incentive grant, the market was a subawuity of in 2015. Currently, for every dollar the market, that customers spend in SNAP benefits, they are matched an additional dollar to use on fresh fruits and vegetables at the market. In addition to that, for every $10 that our customers spend in SNAP benefits, they're actually given another $5 to spend in anything that's SNAP accessible. And in case you don't know what that is, it's anything that you can eat at the market, so anything edible, just not flowers or soap or night shopping. So it really leaves the majority of what we have at the market for purchase by those people. We started our program, the first year, I think we did a little over $1,000 in SNAP benefits, and the conclusion of last year, we were all the way up to nearly $8,500. So it's definitely a program that's growing. The stats for 2017 aren't all in, but from what they're saying, the growth of SNAP benefits have decreased, but the use of SNAP benefits at farmers' markets, especially in the state of Virginia, have increased, which is showing that the work that we're doing to make sure that fresh fruits and vegetables are more equitable, it's actually working. The market also accepts credit cards and William &amp; Mary Express, making it easier for the customers in market to support the vendors. This really helps to stimulate the regional farm economy and preserve the agricultural land. In order for our farmers to stay farming, they have to make a living, and selling direct to consumers is a great way to do that. In addition, the market accomplishes that objective by holding a vendor meeting annually. This is not something that most farmers' markets actually do, but the Williamsburg Farmers' Market has held vendor meetings at least for the last five years consistently. This past year, one of the things that we discussed was safety and security, so we were actually very fortunate to have several members of our Williamsburg Police Fire Department, Colonial Williamsburg, come and speak to our vendors to ensure that we're all on the same page and working together to make the market a very safe place for the vendors and our customers. The next objective is to sustain and enhance the historic role of the Williamsburg Town Center as a premier gathering place for markets, social, cultural, and entertainment events. One of the ways that we did this, especially last year during our 15th anniversary, the market hosted three forums and a conversation with Jerome Grant. We actually held those forums here in the Stricker Center, and the conversation with Jerome Grant happened at the library. In 2002, we held our 10th anniversary, we held a fresh film festival for the community at the Kindle. Weekly, the market also has live music, chef demonstrations, and most recently, the Power of Produce Club for our children. The market board is always looking for more ways to add more fun and educational things The Pop Club is a children's program that began in Seattle. The market added it to our lineup of programs in 2016 with a grant from the Williamsburg Health Foundation in partnership with SHIP, which is the Student Health Initiative Program through the WJCC School. And we also had interim help from the College of William &amp; Mary. Over 200 children participated each season, and that's something we're looking to bring back this year as well. In 2014, the market worked with the Farmers' Market Coalition and the University of Wisconsin to create standardized data collection practices for markets nationwide. I'm happy to share some of that data with you. You can see, we are actually quantifying the way that we're helping our vendors stay in production. One of the data collection pieces that we collect is the acres of farmland in production, and it's definitely impressive at nearly 2,000 acres. The average distance food travels from the farm to the market is 34.5, which, again, is pretty close for statewide. And the market is actually part of the Virginia Farmers' Market Association, so the next time we present to you, we should actually be able to compare this with markets in the state of Virginia. Currently, there are 247 markets. They overtake a couple because it's early in the season in the state of Virginia, and nationwide, there's over 8,000. So you can see, farmers' markets have really grown since our market started in 2002. And every week, we have around 4,800 visitors come and visit the market. We've tried as hard as we can to figure out the exact makeup of whether it's visitors to our community, or locals, or students, and we haven't really figured out a great way to break that down, but we know the majority of our customers have visited the market more than one time, which makes us feel strongly that a lot of our Williamsburg-area residents are coming and supporting the market. And one of the things that makes our market so very special is the wide variety of produce and things that you can purchase at the market, and we had, I think we had 81 varieties of different produce last year, and that obviously is reliant on the vendors hiring. That's exactly what they're bringing. I know this weekend, to my surprise, I found chive blossoms at the market, which wasn't on the list, but very interesting product that the vendors are coming up with. So for 2018, one of the new things that's coming this year, in 2002, our market season was just 20 weeks long. In 2018, we will have the longest season so far, with 44 weeks of farmers' market. That is actually going to include two special markets. We will have a market again during an occasion for the Arts Weekend, which is the first Saturday in October. It will be located in parking lot P6 by Barrett Seafood. And then also on December the 1st, we will have our very first market corresponding with the Christmas Parade, and that will also happen in that parking lot in P6. The hours for that, we're actually accommodating the parade parents, and hopefully some of the children, as they are moving on to the parade lineup, and will be open from 7:00 a.m. to noon. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other questions? I'm glad that you've come. I think we've been very, 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 um, something that helps fashion and down with new, dear people, and people that may not aspire to both be. the place to be.
And I would just like to echo Scott's comments, Casey. Thank you very much, and having worked at the Farmers Market back then, well, before you started, I've really seen the evolution in all of the strides that you've made to make it bigger and better in a variety of ways, and I think one of the things you commented on is not knowing how many visitors and students, but there are definitely a number of visitors there. Each day when I work, you know, they come from Virginia Beach or at the times here, and when I travel, I go to Farmers Markets, and we are steps above many of them in terms of the types of vendors that we have, the chefs turn, the entertainment, and also the special presentations that we arrange. I really liked the one recently on the reading, and the lice makers, and it just exposes our visitors and workers to other vendors that make us new, and provide us the benefits. And we hope that you've done and continue to do.
I agree, but it is impressive. I don't often go to the Farmers Market, but I look on Saturdays, and I drive by on this past weekend, and the weather has been bad, so it's good to see that, and obviously, it's a testament to the variety of products and companies that we have, and doing different displays, and putting the cash, putting the cash through, but we've got to get work, and excited to see forty-four weeks, and I think doing, you know, doing something that would search for touches, you know, tap into the potential, ready for the parade, and giving something that's very rather grand, and a very diverse.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey, for coming and for the presentation today. Mostly thanks to my colleagues, and just to add a little bit more to what the vice mayor has said, I think the farmer's market has really evolved to become a staple of the city's downtown barbecue. And certainly inspiring in many ways, as this city, this body is engaged with its own downtown barbecue thought, that certainly this is a testament to show that there are many different ways to add a lot more to the rural area and also to the city as well. And from a countdown standpoint, you know, it's been a wonderful way to draw students out of the college campus and into the Farmers Market, and into their local education. Also, I think it's remarkable, and this is my final comment, but what's remarkable is the capacity to grow after all these years, since two thousand and two, and has had a quite a difference in the electricity, and it has helped you and started better, and it's incredible to see the amount of participation and interest in the topic areas that you guys have had, so it's been commended, and well done. Thank you for doing today.
Just a couple of comments, and then one more question. How can track the number of visitors who come to you?
That is a great question. So there's multiple ways, and I'm actually in disagreement with the National Farmers Market Coalition on tracking. They prefer to do a sample count four times a year, and, which would be similar to what we currently do. Currently, every week, we count customers on the half hour, so at eight-thirty, nine-thirty, ten-thirty, and eleven-thirty, I myself personally walk up and down Duke Blaster Street and count only grown-ups who appear to be walking into or are currently in the Merchant Square market area. The National Farmers Market Coalition suggests that we do it four times a year, and we do a sample count at every entrance for twenty minutes. In Merchant Square, there are eight entrances, so what we have done to sort of meet in the middle is we have, four times a year, we have volunteer groups come in, and they stand at our eight entrances for all four hours and do a complete count, so that we can figure out how close we are to the recommended method of counting, and that's sort of how we're getting the numbers of over four thousand visitors, because we currently count on the half hour, but what we are not doing is the follow-up question to see how long our customers are staying there, so we don't have the correct number to multiply our count by, whether it be times six, or times four, or whatever, depending on how long you're staying at the market. So we're not counting in place.
Good luck, then.
Thanks.
What have you done previously to coordinate with the parade?
So previously, we have met with the police.
No, I'm sorry, I should say, how was the Farmers Market organized on parade day?
We have not had a market on that weekend, even though we've had many requests, and people confused by the fact that now that our season has extended every week through December twenty-second, we always then say, except for, like, Grand Elimination Weekend. And this, this year, we're very excited to say, every week through December twenty-second, including Grand Elimination Weekend.
I just want particularly to applaud, I think, you guys, as much as I love the parade, and think it's everything that's wonderful about living in small-town America, in some ways, it's a bit of a missed opportunity, because we have so many people downtown, and the parade ends, and they're all kind of looking at, I mean, where do we go now? I'll just live at home. And so the idea that there's a place that people can go after the parade, and spend their money, and still enjoy each other's company, is terrific, so I appreciate you doing that. Two other things I really appreciate about Farmers Market, and chefs turn, and the entertainment is periodically variable, because it adds a different level of activity and ambiance, so it mounds out the whole experience. I'd also like to touch on your point about credit card purchases. I think most people are aware, but just in case they aren't, not every vendor at the Farmers Market accepts a credit card. But if somebody comes downtown to the market with a credit card, they can go to the market booth and buy tokens that they can then use at any of the vendors in the market.
Yep, that's exactly correct. They never expire, all of our vendors take them, so we always tell people that all of our vendors take cash, some of our vendors take credit cards, but they're all happy to take our tokens.
Again, applaud for that. Last question, please. I think the Farmers Market is universally loved. The only negative comment I ever hear from them is they worry about the number of dogs that are brought into the Farmers Market, and I know that's a touchy subject, because clearly, a lot of people love bringing their dog to the market. Is that something the market management thinks about, deals with?
Yes, and the Board of Directors. In fact, on Wednesday at our regular board meeting, we will be reviewing signs that are going to be added to the market potentially, that talk about best practices, like no retractable leashes, and don't allow your animal to eliminate in the market, keep your animal out of the tents. Those best practices are now made available in signs all over the country, luckily, so we have some really great medals for the Board to choose from, but that's probably something new that will be showing up at the market very, very soon.
That's a good question.
Well, I'm going to tell you that I'm sure that is a good question. Does anybody else have anything to ask? Thank you.
Thank you.
This takes us to City Council Communication.
I have one listener. This past week, I attended the Virginia First City's annual meeting with Marvin Collins. A majority of the day, we adopted their budget, elected new state officers, but more importantly, we heard presentations on other localities and how they've engaged with the Department of Housing, whether it's built environment planning, or some other aspect of it, and what I could tell, Marvin Collins took some notes down, and hopefully, that could be used somehow for upcoming G I O's process.
Okay, thank you for sitting here. Anybody have anything else? One item I'd like to mention, and this isn't the position of City Council Communication, but I think we've all probably received a handful, a few handful, of requests regarding the budget, and people's hope that council will not approve a budget if the real estate tax rate increases. And I can certainly appreciate why people feel that way, nobody wants to pay more than they have to for what they get. But it's not as simple as saying, yes, we're going to do an increase, or no, we're not going to do an increase. It's what are we not going to do if we don't have that increase? And the major contributor to why we, why there is a proposed increase, why there's an increase in the proposed budget, is the need for us to meet our contractually-defined obligation to the school system based upon James Sulu Planes' Constitution and their budget. Come on. So we don't have a choice. We have to do that school funding, and that is further complicated this year, because not only does the school have more needs for what they're currently doing, but they're opening an entirely new school, so we've got the infrastructure, personnel infrastructure that needs to be put in place, and that costs a lot of money, and so we need to do our part to fulfill that. We have a few new positions that are coming into the budget, and I'm perfectly prepared to take whatever disagreement, argument, however you want to put it. We're adding public safety personnel to the city's complement of employees, because we know we need to do as good a job as we possibly can on fire and EMS. And I will guarantee you, anybody who's had benefit of those services would totally agree with that, and I think the vast majority of people who haven't, and are so thankful that they haven't needed that, would agree with that, too. With police, you look at the issue with the schools, we have a new school opening that's in the city, we have to have a school resource officer there. We've only done, well, we previously had a part-time school resource officer at the one middle school, and in light of what's been going on, or what has occurred, I should say, nationally, to not do everything we can to provide the safest possible environment would be irresponsible. So we're looking at increasing the police force to meet those needs in the two schools, and I'm confident that every parent, every child in those schools believes that that's what, we should at least do that, if not more. We have a position that we've talked about, that the Commissioner of Revenue, to be an audit position. We're also, I don't mean speak for anybody else, but just speak up if you disagree, probably feel pretty confident that that position is going to more than pay for itself as time goes on. We've got another position, that's an economic development specialist, and that's going to be funded out of whatever means we have of collecting the additional tours and revenue, so it won't be coming out of the regular real estate tax increase or regular city operating budget. So what do we have left? I guess we could stop, you know, we could, we could charge for trash collection, we could charge for recycling, but we could do other things. The only thing that's left is staff compensation, and there's a proposed two percent increase in the overall staff compensation in the upcoming budget, along with an additional five hundred dollar increase for anybody who makes under fifty thousand, so that Mr. Collins. So I think the decision that's left with this council is, do we want to go ahead with those staff increases, or is there something, some way we can do that? But even if we, if we don't do those staff increases, let's say we do one percent instead of two percent, that doesn't give us the leeway to not, that's not enough money to not do the three percent increase. No, three cent increase. Do you have any idea, Mr. Collins, roughly about what a one percent increase equates to? I don't need to pick any examples.
Approximately one hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
He's a one cent increase, but for the one percent increase to staff.
I have to look it up.
The one thing, though, I might ask is to think about, because last year, we did the compensation study, when we did a reevaluation of a number of positions, and that was a fairly subsequent investment in personnel. And when I raise this question, but I also want to say, absolutely, I'm not questioning the value of city staff. My question was our responsibility to be good stewards of the money that is entrusted to us by the residents of this community, and how those are spent, and balancing that with the needs of retaining and motivating quality staff that does excellent work for the residents of this community. The challenge with every time we do a percentage increase on employee compensation is that in each successive year, we're compounding the impact of that increase. So I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with that two percent increase, or would we want to consider some combination of a one percent increase with a one percent bonus if we obtain certain financial performance over the course of the year, or do or not do the five hundred dollars for employees who make less than fifty thousand dollars? I just think that, we need to think about that. I don't mean to put anybody in a spot here, but I welcome any thoughts and objections.
Yeah, I agree, I think, I thought it was a little bit last, I don't know where to get it, very frustrated to lead, to lead this next campaign, to have money raised. But we cut on the other side of that. We don't find revenue to favor the strength that I believe in leading, as you just said, could be cut. I don't think we can cut the compensation, because so much of what feels and makes us feeling strong and vibrant is because you have a nice footprint, motivated, and they've done a good job, and they've done their duties. You start to eliminate compensation, and morale goes down, and then all those life in cities stops. Where do you start making a stretch, and out-of-town dollars and interactions? That doesn't really materialize as a whole lot of money, so I think we're at a point where we have to go revenue. Just like in our own households, expenses go up, you have to find ways to raise revenue. We do that through the job that we're doing, and making what we're supposed to do, and expenses go up. I think we have a nine percent increase in interest rate in France rates this year, but we can't do anything about it. We have to meet that obligation, so I support that aspect of it, pretty much, of that, of how we make that, so we're just taught in the city, putting our members, of what those increases mean.
You could just keep two discussions on Thursday, too.
But I've had some, some of the legislation, had the dust-up plan, just that, probably, so, across the board, it's not merit, it's a fair amount, business merit. That's, that's part of the, that's, that's, had we not just done the front fact, though, because the front fact is not about ongoing operations, it's a, it's a.
In one, again, it's a compound, it is a kind of doing consideration.
Essentially, adopting the recommendation of front fact, that we corrected the front fact, and that, from a, from a side, because that's been seriously turned down, so, you know, if we're not raising, not giving staff a raise, or something that lasts a two percent, doesn't mean it doesn't happen later, just, we probably have to touch them up at some time, so do it incrementally, or do it. I think because we didn't do raises for so many years, it's going to be enough that it happens, and then, you know, and as a result, we have to, we catch up to six hundred thousand dollars in a year, so I think, you know, that compensation is going to have to, if we don't do it this year, and we declare it next year, it's just going to be a bigger debt next year.
And I think the private market parallels to a certain amount of demand for people, foster and kind of employees has gone up, and availability of employees has gone down, and there's others.
I don't think, I don't think it's, it's a balance, I mean.
It's necessary, I can justify the increase, but it is something that we have to discuss once we're all, because it means a percent.
No, other than that, you, etc., it's, it's, I'm, 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 I'm,
very long time has been subsidized by the performance of our tourism economy. And now, we don't have as much of a gap between the revenues that were generated from tourism and what we're getting from other tax, so the subsidy is decreasing. So, that's why we're facing the possibility and potential of increasing the real tax rate. Our hope is that if we can invest in, our strategy is if we can invest in tourism product in the city and we can find additional money from marketing this community and the entire jurisdiction, we're going to grow that tourism economy further in a way we haven't done in many years because it will be a fairly significant change from the way we've approached investing in tourism. And that will hopefully stem the need for future real property tax increases. I just think that's a point that I don't want the community to decide. So, every, right now, Mr. Collins, don't let me come on. Right now, every dollar that we get, whether from whichever tax increase that we get, whether it's the, what city council has already passed or what we could potentially do in concert with our jurisdictions, the city intends to invest all of that money in tourism marketing and, I should say, tourism product development and/or tourism marketing. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Zhang's point, even though there's that other potential increase, that money can't offset potential for raising the real property tax if we really want to make that progress in growing the tourism. Otherwise, we're just pushing and kicking the ground down.
And I think that's part of what this, that must enter the situation for our listeners because in past years, the money that has been, revenues that's been generated from tourism and tourism has gone into core services and so we fall and sit back behind. And this is an opportunity for us to grow our response and to make a relevant impact. And that is the discussion that we have our summer as far as the recent parade and how we got it was a necessity.
If I may, it's harder to get to even just looking at the budget because the new positions are going out in different times, that needs to be calculated. So, if I can get you that number, if I could provide it as staff, for this discussion. The cost of living across the county and the district has increased positively this time this year. This is not a significant increase. The district maintains their buying power to themselves and their elements of rent are familiar. And the additional five hundred dollars for employees that make fifty thousand less are for employees that'll be more adversely impacted by the health care fund than employees that make more than that. So, the logic of staff and recommending that is to maintain what we did to employees that in the last couple of years that have been passed so that they're not losing that , but maintaining that effort to make more policy. And that's, that's, that's recommendations and that remains my recommendation. But I would add that council needs to make a new legislation.
Yes, Mr. Shatton, last question. Is there any vehicle or method by which in the budget, I mean, I don't, I'm not necessarily legal, but legal, if council decided that rather than increase the pay of people who make less than fifty thousand dollars a year, we cover the additional nine percent, the people who make less than fifty thousand dollars a year, fifty thousand dollars a year are paying for their health insurance. So, we're not actually increasing the salary.
There is an obligation that the city has under the federal law with respect to the affordability of insurance. And so, with respect to that, you would need to do something if it crosses that threshold.
I can also say that in calculating the percentage that the city pays to the health fund versus that the employee pays is established by certain benefit levels within the pool. There's a certain percentage that we're required to pay, this is setting it to that percentage. And that would create, if we had that level of inactivity within our employees that's going to get on, no absent ages premium than others, other than just what they make annually and which may not be, that needs to be taken into account, yeah, it creates a better inactivity in the formula rather than definitely unchanging our own.
So, in five weeks?
No.
Yesterday.
And it's, it's not fair to employees to have different levels of premium payment in the, really not.
So, but we're increasing the pay of employees whether or not they're taking city's health insurance?
Like this, that's, that wasn't based completely on premium, but impacted in your economy that they wanted to make it back.
Okay. If you could get us the number, I mean, the other number would be helpful to, I think we'd asked before, what, how many city employees were there in somewhere around two thousand, fiscal year, two thousand and nine, I guess, and how many that are, that are supposed to be in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen? Because over that decade, we know the city's growing, we know the needs of our community are growing. I think one of the concerns that, and like you say, that our constituents have is, is government growing out of proportion to the community and having a sense of loyalty where ten years ago?
I think we know, based on our experience, right after we were running the session, Dr. Spies and Steve and Dave, getting close to the vision, we were down in the line eighty-seven range. That's, that's kind of, I think we're at that, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of that a little bit.
Then maybe you could pick, I mean, then to, maybe to make it more equitable, pick something like FY two thousand and seven.
Well, just if I could have a number about that, the dispatches with your, so there may not be an asterisk, asterisk comparison with this development?
Could you put an asterisk on it?
We'll explain over the time period.
Okay. I think something like that would be helpful.
And also, I guess we would include contact in the school because they're not, you know, they're fully covered in the, they're doing the work, people know, they're not getting their salaries and then to them, to start another asking.
Well, we don't have that many contacts in the.
Well, anything else on that? Any other City Council Communication? Scheduled meetings, Mr. Collins, anything you want to have?
None of this.
This brings us to open forum. Anybody who would like to address council on any matter, ask you to please come forward, offer your name, address, and if you could keep your comments to five minutes or less, we would appreciate it. Mr. Kirkman?
Fire members of council, John Kirkman, zero zero one A, sweep two E, Lynn F. Grigina, number after the hotel, my associate. I heard your comments about hoping that the tourism economy could help spur growth, tax growth in the city. I think we're going to need some help in terms of the project. I just heard tourism in the Saturday, that saying record numbers are due. And that's not the case. There has to be a change in that mentality a little bit, we're not, we need to improve. And I think we should consider that, the search out. Someone's got to make a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? With that, we'll close the open forum. Do we have anything for the closing session?
Yeah, we do. We're going to close session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one of the Code of Virginia, purposes discussing one personnel matters per subparagraf one concerning important sports and commissions, and two legal matters per subparagraf eight for the purpose of consultation, specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council concerning one settlement initiation, two, and others.
Second. President, would you call the local?
Aye.
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 Aye. Counsel will take a brief recess and reconvene in closed session.